All right. Hello, everyone, and good evening, and welcome to the City Council Regular Session Meeting, Monday, May 16, 2022, at 7:00. Let's. Let's stand for the pleasure of the just. A pleasure to be here, to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cory, we'll call. Thank you. Counselor Page, he stepped away. He'll be right back. Oh, sure. Counselor Kendall. He has a mask on the computer. That's a problem. Counselor Kendall?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Littahen?
Here.
And Counsel Sheldon is excused. Great. Thanks, Cory. Before we get started and I move into consent agenda, I just wanted to make a statement. The recent shooting in Buffalo is on my mind. I just want to make a statement. This is, you know, hate has no place in my heart. Hate has no place in North Plains, and I just want to take a moment of silence for the victims and the families affected by the Buffalo shooting. Our prayers are with their with their families. Thank you, everyone. Item number five is our consent agenda. We have the approval of tonight's agenda, the approval of May 2nd minutes, and the Resolution 2186 adopting the council rules. Are there any corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for adoption.
All okay. All right, we have a first by Counsel Kendall, second by Counsel Payton. Any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Item six is our public comment. This is the time we wish anyone in the audience online or in the hall to speak on anything not on the agenda. Let the record show there's no one here at Jesse May's. Cory, do you have anything in writing?
I did not receive anything for that meeting.
All right, thank you. Tonight is staff report night. Good to see everyone, and Robin, you're up first.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Is my mic? Everyone hear me okay? Everyone hear me okay? And online? Can you give me a thumbs up, please? We can just have our own meeting, Blake.
Say best staff report ever.
There they go again.
Oh, we're the host now.
I know, mine it says you're the host. Going out with a bang.
Yeah, yeah, I've been Public Works Director and City Manager, and now I'm a host. Oh, here they come.
Any other work to do again? No, I think we're good. Counsel Martinez, Robin just gave her a report, and I know we were having technical issues. Did you have anything that you wanted to ask her about?
No, I'm good. I actually read through hers prior to, so thank you for asking.
Absolutely. Thank you. Blake, did you have any questions?
No, it was the best report I ever heard.
Do you have a merited? Counselors, anything for Robin tonight?
Chair, she's going to bring this up later, but stakeholders meeting, yeah?
Yeah, that was wonderful. Thank you for attending. I've been synthesizing information from that and a staff, a similar staff meeting we had, because we'll be talking about it at library board this Wednesday. We'll be choosing our main focus areas for the strategic plan based on all of that input, and so that was really, it was very helpful and great. Thank you.
So we're going to get that, you're going to put the report together?
So the whole strategic plan hopefully will be ready to go by the end of the fiscal year. We still got a little ways to go to write it up. But working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Robin, I just wanted to say that I have seen someone from the library at Quality Rich last few weeks as well, just for some evening activities, and I don't know where you got them from, but those clicky pens that have all the different inks were a hit, and all the kids in the kindergarten class were talking about it, so just wanted to keep up the great work.
Thank you, Counsel Payton. I'll pass that along.
All right. Thanks, Robin. All right, next on the agenda, Chief Haxson.
Hello, good evening, American Councilors. For April, looked like we had 253 calls for service or self-initiated activities. Highlights for that would be, I mean, in the public safety town hall, we've discussed that a couple of different meetings. That was pretty well attended. Again, it was 15 or 20 community members there. In April, we did 57 hours of overtime, approximately 57 hours of overtime for that month. In addition, if you look at the stats, that's pretty much why it looks like the self-initiated numbers have spiked, and that's going to be because of those after hours. So some of those numbers are a little inflated because there are going to be an extra work tonight. The only other thing really to note is unfortunate conference injury is lasting a little bit longer than we expected, so she's going to be out, it looks like, for at least another five weeks. And I've gone through and had a specific deputy assigned, so we've got a consistent deputy working in her absence for the next five weeks, which is best for the city and ambulance best for them as well, so. And if that lasts longer, then that deputy will stay and continue working. That's definitely part of it, so. That's really what I have, and I'm open for any questions.
What kind of activities are you seeing tonight?
Again, it's mostly the self-initiated activity, trying traffic stops. That's really what they're doing, driving around, stopping cars and talking to people.
Has there been any fruit from that?
Depending on what your definition of fruit is.
Somebody that has priors in the area doesn't need to be definitely.
I don't know all the specifics of that, but they are stopping people, so it's really hard to, to be honest with you, it's really hard to judge fruits for what you're saying, because even if they are out of the area, it's still a free country, and whether they're preventing it or whether it's locals, it's hard to say exactly, but they are being seen and they're being active, being seen in the evening, which is really what we want.
So more rest later, anything, just stopping to get the thing?
Well, we don't track arrests, so in all our stats and stuff, we're not really tracking arrests, but they haven't written in the last two months, I believe, from March and April, they've only written one report, so it's not getting busy per se, but they're staying active, if that makes sense. So a lot of the calls are going to be non-calls, a general report, but for instance, they've done, they've given 18 warnings, six citations, they serviced eight calls, and they've done 92 self-initiated activities, and that's in two months. So that kind of gives you the rundown of the activity that they've done. And again, that's just the overtime focus. That's not comparing anybody else.
Well, that's what we want. We want them visible. We want them, you know, I think the visibility for me personally is the biggest thing. Just being on the roads, people see, and if you have to stop them just to educate them, fine. If you have to stop them and give them a ticket, that's fine too, whatever, that's your job. To be visible in the community is what our people need to see. So I appreciate that. I also want to, if you wouldn't mind, just extending well wishes to Officer Conway for me, please, for the council as well. I'd really appreciate that.
She's, and she's not broken and broken. I mean, she's in a hospital bed. She's working, she's doing fine. She'd like to be back at work, to be honest with you, like in normal work, but her wrist is still so, yeah, so.
She's missed.
Yes.
Counsel Martinez, do you have anything for Chief?
No, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. So it sounds like the the overtime deputy statistics are not included in either one of these reports. Is that correct?
No, that is not, that is inaccurate. The total numbers that you're looking at for April, I didn't pull out specifically the overtime stats. So these numbers that you're seeing include all of the North Plains activities for any North Plains deputy, either in the city or outside of the city. In other words, the top column is if it's a North Plains deputy or deputy assigned in North Plains for that day or that time. All these stats include those for the, for April.
Okay, and I think my follow-up question for that is, looking at the number, looking at the trends, and I know, I know we've discussed this previously, that the citation side of it, considering we're adding 57 hours of overtime, where the numbers are almost parallel from 2020 to 2022, and I just was hoping to get some insight on to why that is, especially knowing that we're adding so much extra overtime and not really seeing huge return on investment. I do agree that that visibility is really important to our residents, but I'm also thinking from a numbers perspective, and I feel like we're bleeding money, paying overtime, and for peace of mind, and I do love the peace of mind, but I'm also driving through town, I see people running stocks, and I see speeders, and seeing that we've only issued five citations in the month of April. As we hear sirens outside, ironic, but seeing that we've only issued five citations for the month of April, and you know, even in 2020, in the height of the pandemic, right, we still had issued nine, and I just, again, you know, I know that, I only know just a small piece of your role and your job, so I was just hoping you could provide some more light on to that, so I could help understand why we're seeing so few citations issued despite the added coverage.
I don't have a good answer to say why deputies aren't issuing citations. All I can do is speculate and say that maybe what they're seeing is not something they're going to issue citations for, but they're stopping people for violations and doing much more of what Counsel Page is saying to where contacting people and letting them know we're here. So why do not issue more citations? I can't give you a good answer for.
Yeah, and I think the other part of that is, you know, again, looking at the numbers, just for the first section for contract deputies, 2020, 2022, exact same number of traffic citations, or traffic, I'm sorry, traffic stops. And, you know, increased self-initiated, increased public demand, but yet we're still seeing the decrease in citations, and I'm only bringing this up, I don't want to seem nitpicky, and we don't necessarily want to think we need to, you know, start issuing tickets to every single person that's breaking the law, but also I'm just thinking from a numbers perspective, how are we breaking even for this? So we can definitely have a one-off conversation, but I just was thinking about, gosh, 57 hours of overtime is a lot in a month, and we're not really, I'm not necessarily seeing the return on investment. It sounds like at night, you know, their presence is there, but we're not seeing a lot of activity either. So that was, that's all I had to question, and again, I'm happy to chat with you offline, so we don't drag the meeting on, but I just wanted to get some perspective.
Well, last thing I will say is, understand that we're talking midnight hours in North Plains, so I can only speculate on how many vehicles are potentially traveling through, and so self-initiated isn't just traffic stops. So that's whether we're doing foot checks here at the new bathrooms right over here, or security checks, all of the different self-initiated activities included, anything that they're doing other than call-based. So there may not be a huge increase in traffic stops or necessary citations, but there, again, I don't have a good answer for, for not more, but I appreciate it. I can look into and figure it out, but I can't guarantee that there's going to be a huge influx in the next two months of massive citations, because I'm going to hold firm that I believe it's the deputy's prerogative on what they're dealing with, is whether they're going to issue a citation or not, and based on what the circumstances are. So again, I'm much more into taking care of the community with education, and it's a small enough community, if you start seeing the same people doing the same problem, you're probably going to remember them, and then I think citations would be warranted in that case, but I want to leave that in the deputy's prerogative. Yes, sir.
One more question about self-initiated. What qualifies as that? They intended to take, do they want to do patrol? In this one area, do they consider self-initiated?
Yes, you know.
Because you can really balloon up a self-initiated number, like, hey, I stopped at McDonald's, I stopped by this place, like, you know, you could really. What is the criteria for that to be something?
There is a plethora of wide range of activities. It could be self-initiated. So it's not like it's one or two, so if I decide, it's funny, I don't want to really delay this and bring this, this meeting to a lasting thing, but there are a number of activities that you can do, and one of the ways that we track some of the activities that we want, for instance, school zone. When I, when I do a school zone, I create a detail, so I can track all the different times via the CAD system, how many times I'm sitting in the school zone. That ends up being a self-initiated activity. I'm not really pulling people over, I'm not doing anything, but I'm creating a call, a CAD call, that I'm assigned to a specific incident. So really, to answer your question, if I assign myself to a specific activity, that's going to be a self-initiated call, whether I'm specifically targeting, targeting speed enforcement on a certain section of commercial or north or Pacific or wherever it is, or if I'm doing a specific stop sign sitting on, like, traffic enforcement, I can assign myself a specific activity so that I don't get dispatch calls, or I'm not, my unit activity is I'm just sitting there doing nothing in the same spot for long periods of time. That's not to say that I can't be patrolling around Brineal at night, not doing that, but if I were to step out of my car and do a foot check, then I would want to put myself out so that everybody else knows where I'm at, on this detail, and where I'm at, in case something bad were to happen, so. Or if I contact someone, anytime you contact people, that's going to be automatically a self-initiated activity, whether it's traffic stop or out on a phone somewhere. Dispatch will automatically put that out. So again, that's really, I would say that the crux of it is, is if you dedicate yourself to a specific task, and you let dispatch know that's going to be a self-initiated, or you do it on the CAD system, you can do it yourself as well.
Great, and don't worry about taking up too much, too much time, but you know, why does 50% of is this, you get, you get, you get half the time.
Gotcha.
So just to clarify, self-initiated is something like, if you want to do a, if you want to watch a specific house for somebody, or you want to watch a specific stop sign, or if you're going to do a patrol, you call it in, so people know where you're at.
If I was targeting a specific area for a specific reason of putting myself unavailable doing that, yes, I could do the exact same thing and not not put myself on, out with dispatch, if that makes sense. In other words, I could sit on a stop sign. In fact, it happens because I'll forget to create a call, and I'll just be sitting on the stop sign for 30 minutes, whatever, and then I'll just move on. So does that answer your question? So yes.
Yes.
That's exactly, that's exactly how a way to use it.
Because whenever you, of course, I've been self-initiated, guys, the actual, I don't look at citations. I don't get the self-initiated. That's my key for what you guys are doing, right? So that's bad and also the calls.
Yeah, so really, and that's why we care about the public demand calls, and we care about the self-initiated calls, and some, sometimes it's a little different because it's a small town, and I can explain that here in a second. Again, the public demand calls are the calls that come in through dispatch. Someone calls in, and that's, that comes in through dispatch. I didn't initiate it in any way, shape, or form. That comes in, and now we're dispatched that call that goes into the queue, regardless of how miniscule, how minor it is, it could just be someone wants a phone call, it could be someone just saying, hey, FYI, this is, there's a parking problem, whatever it is. It maybe doesn't even need specific enforcement, but that's a call that comes in to the North Plains, public demand. Self-initiated, if I'm just driving around and I see a parking problem, I can put myself out, and those are anything that I do specifically, those are absolutely, that's kind of your two ways of tracking, not all your activity, but the activity through dispatch.
Thank you. I spend most of my time, I look at these, I get the phone calls and the, and the, and the, and self-initiated, and try and get a measure of what's going on. In my mind, self-initiated was talking to somebody. But now I know a little more about what it is.
So, yeah, and that's, that stuff happens a lot. So caveat twice, as I was going to say a minute ago, that happens a lot, where you can just talk to people, that, unless you call yourself out, that just happens. And so you don't necessarily always put yourself on that, because sometimes people just pull up, you try to, but sometimes it just doesn't work. The other thing that happens, and this is that small town portion, is someone will, you'll have to create a call, a theft call or something like that, but it didn't come in through dispatch. It came in through, I don't know, social media, and someone gets ahold of you, and now, now you know about this theft, and you have to go contact them about theft, but they didn't use the non-emergency system. So now when I say, hey, I'm going to be doing a theft, it comes in as a self-initiated call versus a public demand call, even though technically it should be a public demand call, because you're not taking a theft report just because you stumbled across it, like, you know, like you're self-initiating, but someone else is, is driving that. So, and again, that's probably a small percentage, more so in North Plains than you would think, because the rest of the county really doesn't work that way for the most part. Most people just flag you down, usually comes into dispatch. So this, this North Plains has a unique, pretty much a well-known history of you get calls through different channels other than dispatch.
Last question.
Go ahead.
So I'm looking at these indicators. Public demand and self-report, but now, so this should, now taking about the kind of reports. Like, because there might, it's like, okay, reports, reports is the actual activity we have, such as a theft, or if somebody gets arrested, right? So I should look at reports as well, as that activity, or the yield.
So that's a good question. Anytime, anytime there's a custody issue, there's a report. There's no question. So a DUI, you arrest someone for any crime, there's automatically going to be a report generated. So there is those reports. There's also reports anytime there's a theft, a hit-and-run, commission, there's going to be a report. Most crashes get a report. Not all, because not all crashes need a report, because it goes by the DMV standards. However, some of the reports that aren't tracked on those, so those are all reports, really your crimes or yeah, and arrest or crime, so all your virtual crimes. However, there are information reports that we do when people call in, they need something documented or suspicious, or we do evidence, for some reason we found a wall, we have to put it into evidence, we write it over the force. So there are some of those reports as well, some non-conductivity. Traffic crashes, a lot of times we follow that non-conductivity. There's another category of reports that isn't tracked, and it's a really difficult system to figure out how, because of the new report-writing system, is follow-up reports. So one report, you may have to do multiple reports on this one case, but it still only counts as the one report, if that makes sense. So I'm doing multiple follow-up reports, and some of the follow-ups can almost be longer than the original report, not tracked, because it's not an R1, it's not a, it's not that, and it's because of the system and the way that the system works, it really only tracks the original reports.
Yeah, their report goes, I guess, for the, the year, date, and the best thing all of it is, right?
And, and again, multiple deputies could write reports, you know, not so much in the, in the city, in the North Plains, because it's one deputy working for the most part, but in the county, multiple deputies could write reports on one incident. Only one deputy is the, is the report.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? You know, there's, thanks a lot for your explanations tonight, and so I'm sure that if, we have a lot of questions and clarifications and that sort of thing, I'm sure that public does as well. Do you have any plans for the next town hall?
Like I said, like, I got to figure out the word for three a year, so we're looking to, you know, three months out or so, so.
Right. I was just thinking summer's coming up, and might be a nice time to visit with folks, and yeah.
Well, the beauty of it is, is there's a lot of activities coming up for North Plains with, and obviously, realistically, I'm always available, you know, with minor exceptions. But we've got the Fourth of July parade coming up, we've got.
Ice cream social, strawberries.
Yeah, as well as National Night Out's coming up, so we'll be doing another thing for National Night Out. So the summer is really one of the best times that everyone's together, and of course, you can't, you have to say the garlic festival, right? I know you said ice cream, but that's really what it is. So there's going to be, all the communities, a lot of the community will be together.
Good. Well, the next one is June 2nd, that's Ice Cream Social, so.
Very good.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate that. Next up is Public Works, Blake.
Hello, tonight is my last council meeting and last staff meeting, and I want to make it a short one. Really, the only thing I need to report, everything has basically been the same on my reports for quite a while, is our Cotty Street Waterline Street Overlay project. Doing it, we came across some bad sections of asphalt that were less than two inches, and we've done some redesign, redesign work out there, and it's still going to keep us under budget, so things are looking good. But that project should be wrapping up possibly next week or the week after, so after I'm gone, and that's my report.
Any comments or questions for Blake?
Congratulations on retiring. I hope to do that myself one day.
Well, thank you very much.
I know that we're having a barbecue on Friday, right? No, definitely. All right, well, thank you very much, Blake. I really appreciate that. Next up is the Finance Director.
Good evening. It is a, good evening, everyone. Okay, so. Well. Not a lot of changes in the operating funds. I'm happy to delve into any of the details, but I think what I want to do is kind of really hit the big highlight. I'd like the highlight for the month, and that is activity in overdue water accounts. We had, in April, we basically were down over $9,000 in overdue accounts for a few different reasons. It's, since COVID, overdue balances in total for the city have varied from about $11,000 to $15,000 a month. And we've made steps in the right direction, and then one step back one month, or we've had a little bit of activity. In April, we came to the point of turning over about $5,000 in overdue balances. I believe less than 20 accounts. I don't have the number on the top. I don't have the number right here, but we did turn over about $5,000 worth of overdue balances to collections. And then we had a major account that was having some major leakage and major fee accumulation that we settled, settled, that we arranged payment. And major fee, um, accumulation that we settled, settled, that we arranged payment and. Um, figured out a way to get that balance down with that, um, customer. And then the rest of the balances, we had a number, a bunch of balances that were, um, brought current over the course of the month. But that was actually just a lot of accounts between thirty and sixty days overdue. And a lot of those were just sort of normal notices and, and, um, people coming in or people paying their, their bills. So. It was a combination of factors, but April was actually a very, um, active and strong moving forward month for overdue balances. Um, and getting that down. And yeah, and Robin is correct. And we just wanted to give credit to Bailey. Um, Bailey Gant, who is our, uh, who really kind of is the point person that does all that work with. Um, water account billing, that's correct. She, she's, um. Works with the public very well on their accounts, but she's, she's a stickler and she sticks to things. And, and she works with people, but she doesn't, um, give people too much, um, gap to slip. So it's all with a smile, but she does, she does her job well on that account. So. Um, April was a great one for the, the one utility. Just want to make that, make that clear. Um, anything else to point out? The other, you know, the other thing really kind of really is general fund revenues, um. Property taxes, people's property tax bills, um, they were supposed to pay their final third by Friday. Actually technically Sunday, the fifteenth, that was the last day you can make a partial payment. And so far for the year, we're, property taxes are, um, pushing seven hundred and ten thousand, which is over what we budgeted, what we projected for the year. So that's looking good. On the other hand, development has been slow because of extended COVID closures and then slow down in development. Approval and, um, so developments served the, the community development departments revenues for different development application revenues. That sort of thing is behind. So it's kind of a mixed bag, but that's kind of a couple of the points, just a highlight. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions or, um, help with anything.
Cameron Martinez.
I'm good, thank you.
I guess I can ask a simple question. Do we know what our, what our usage is per month?
We do. I don't have the statistics in front of me, but we do, but we do track that, yes.
Well, the way I'm saying this, because as you notice, we've had a lot of rain. People like me are not watching at all. I got a feeling it's gonna be that way for a little bit. I got a feeling their water usage is just gonna be down.
Counselor Smith, I, I would agree with you. I, I haven't seen the latest numbers, but, but I think you're right. I think. I'm wondering where, when May is going to show up also. So I would expect that compared to where we, we probably normally would be as far as a water usage base, probably low to start for sure. Um, I would agree with that.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? Thank you. Um, in your package is the land use application for the previous month. Any questions, uh, for Andy? All right. Let's move on to, uh, the public hearing. Eight A ordinance number four seventy-one is the economic opportunity analysis. You have something to read? Thank you, Laurie.
The North Plain City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding file twenty-two dash zero five zero economic opportunity analysis. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The council may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral evidence testimony on the proposed items. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will call for council comments and discussion. The mayor will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full correct mailing address. Or as preferred, their email address. Parties will be notified at the decision, continuances, appeals. Or other procedural actions required by the code and state laws. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact. Or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed items. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing. An opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Lori. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven thirty-five.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lynn. So before you this evening is your public hearing for file twenty-two dash oh five oh. It includes both an updated economic opportunities analysis. And an update to your comprehensive plan to the goal line economic development section. The planning commission recommendation is in the packet this evening and it does include all the findings of fact. That this proposal meets the city's criteria for a comprehensive plan text amendment, which includes the Oregon statewide planning goals. So all of the requirements for the city to be able to make a decision are met. You'll note that in the planning commission, um, notice of, or recommendation, they did change one word. And that is related to the policies that this council set, um, I believe last winter about. Um, the economic, um, development priorities. And the current wording is to reverse the worsening trend of bedroom community status for North Plains with a thriving job housing balance. By expanding and diversifying employment opportunity and industry, industry profile of presence. And the planning commission felt that the word worsening could be a bit inflammatory, but doesn't. Um, take away if it's removed. So they did forward the recommendation. For the comprehensive plan text to not include the word worsening. So if there's any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those, because I know that's a little, a little, a little random and outside of the economic opportunities analysis itself. Um, and then in addition, Lori today sent you an email with a letter that we received into the record. Um, from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, that is generally constructive and, um, you know. Thankful of North Plains really assessing economic need in our, in our state and our region. Uh, but they did have a few technical questions that city staff is, uh, responding to and setting up a meeting with D L C at this time to address. So, uh, we don't have any concerns that we can't move forward with adoption of the E O A this evening. With that, I'll take any questions, uh, and I'll say that I can answer questions regarding the process for the public hearing. For the planning commission recommendation, but your expert, Bill Reed, is here to address any specific question.
Cameron, uh, Counselor Martinez, do you have any questions? I'll start with you. No, um, anyone here?
I have, I have one, um, slightly off topic, but just long-term question. Let's say a manufacturing or maybe a data center that we know utilizes. Heavy, heavy resources such as water, electricity. Um, long-term, how does that impact the city if we were to have a data center? Or something that would take up a lot of resources? How would that impact the city? Is our water supply, you know, all the work we're trying to do for the residents? Um, could you shed a little bit of light onto that?
Absolutely. So. As part of the U G B planning process that this E O A informs will go through. Um, basically an infrastructure planning phase so that we can appropriate, appropriately plan for infrastructure to meet the need. In phases or however we're going to. Divide it out over time. Um, to make sure that we have adequate maintained infrastructure as well as adequate expansion for water for streets, that sort of thing. So, um. We, we have the plan for it is the bottom line. And what the E O A in front of you basically says is this is the opportunity that the city can. Achieve over a twenty-year period. But what, but what later phases of the process does is how do we get there? So that planning is how we would get there and it includes infrastructure.
And I, I think the follow-up to that is thinking, you know, about some, some of our neighbors. Um, and some of the growth that's happening and data centers that are going in and some of that. Financial impact being passed through to the residents, right, to build this infrastructure for the data center that takes. So much of a resource. Um, so I'm just thinking more long-term of. Is this a cost that's going to be passed on to the residents to be able to offer? Such industrial answer. And I, and I know, who knows, was a crystal ball for what could go in this industrial zone. But I'm just thinking more, more along those lines of what is to pass on to residents.
So, um, all very good questions, uh, Councilwoman. So, um, the, the, the goal of, of the E O A. Is to, to back up a little bit, is to find an opportunity to bring employers and other businesses like that into the city. And they, some of them do use water or use power more than others and we, we must, we, we have to plan for that. That's what we actually have to do as part of this process. But at the end of the day, if you talk to Dan Diaz at the City of Hillsborough, their economic development director. What he will tell you is consistent with why we were, we were planning for these things. They pay immensely in terms of property tax revenue. They pay water fees. They pay franchise. They pay through and franchise fees to the city that we receive for power usage and privilege. They create a lot of new and major revenue streams for the city to balance out what city residents have to pay. And, and, and that's the goal is, um, all the service, the vast majority of the service cost in the city right now is being paid. Overwhelmingly by the residents. But if you go to any other city. Businesses are helping pay for that. And here that's less so. So having those businesses, even though they might use a lot of water or power. What they contribute to city revenues to offset what residents are having to pay for, it's actually in that benefit to residents. Is how I would phrase that, if that makes sense. I'll, I'll. One more thing to, uh, like Bill alluded to, we'll, what we play for a grant, same funding source that gives the downtown plan for. Find the transportation government grant to help us in the concept and infrastructure planning, uh, the U G B. And the timing would be great because that funding is not available until twenty twenty-three. That's the time we'd be doing a lot of that planning and modeling. But there are some other, I guess, tools that we could look at at the same time, you know, for instance. Sometimes new growth areas will have a, a new S T C to pay for and balance out a lot of the impacts that we do it. A lot of South Hillsborough is a different S T C. The, we'll, we'll investigate some of those things too, depending on the use, depending on how, how an area is sold. Um, we could initiate another U R A, a lot of North Hillsborough. It's a new U R A district. Uh, they had that increment from day one, helped plan a paper a lot of infrastructure. So these, as part of the modeling, some of the things we'll look at next year. Trying to not move.
So Bill, I'm gonna ask you the questions that I asked in my email, just for clarification. Okay? Um, so we, we received this letter from the state of Oregon and they have four recommendations for the city. To, um, that, that you all are going to have to dive into and, and, um, you know, respond to. Uh, some great recommendations, interesting, um. You know, and the first thing I had were some concerns like, oh, does this mean that we have to redo any of our E O A? Like, do we have to go back and do an amendment or, you know, anything like that? So I was just kind of wanting you to share your perspective, um, as far as these four recommendations, like, do you see these as huge hurdles? Um, are we going to have, have to make any significant kind of changes to the E O A? To, to get the blessings on these four, you know, can you walk us through that, what that's gonna look like?
Um, after me, right, so, um. I'll, I'll answer the, your questions upfront and then I'll elaborate. I don't anticipate. Many changes at all to this E O A, really. Um, and here's why. Um, anytime, uh, uh, again, my background, before I joined the city for twenty years, I was a consultant. Um, on real estate land use, including E O As and G B expansions for other cities. Anytime a small community. Um, who is trying to expand its economy. Uh, for tax reasons, for jobs, housing balance reasons, anytime they, a city that's small and tries to plan it. Um, more employment growth. Comes along and says, we plan to grow much faster than we have in the past because we have to. We're, we're losing a fiscal battle or we're a budgeting community and we have a jobs house balance problem and it's going to get worse, that sort of thing. That requires a city to forecast employment growth. It's much faster than ever has been before. And if, 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 if it's never happened like that before, but that's what the city needs to do. There's no historical growth to base that forecast on. And so D L C D says. Look, um, this is pretty aggressive looking employment growth. You're going to need to justify it. Uh, or have you justified it? Um, that's a lot of industrial land and sites you're going to need. You're going to need to justify that because you don't have any history there. And all of the questions and points that they raise are along those lines. Any city that needs to plan to be something different employment-wise in the future. Is being aspirational, but is also planning for more growth that it's seen in the past. And it kind of has to plan for an outcome, not forecast its employment to be something unprecedented. Does that make sense? And that's what we did. And that's what we have to sit down with, with D L C D, the Economic Development Specialist and talk about. We are very actively not only using administrative rules that are set out for goal line, E O A analysis that's before you. We're also very actively implementing, um, decisions made by, by L C D C. And L U B A, which are, with L C D C is kind of the governing commission of, of, for land use in the state. And L U B A is a land use board of appeals. They're the ones who decide challenges to your urban growth boundary expansions. And we're paying a very close attention to decisions in Woodburn, in Skepphus, which I was involved in before I joined the city. Um, at an earlier stage, um, as well as Springfield. And all of those communities said, we're going to have these employers and we're gonna need this land. And it's not gonna look like anything we've ever been in the past, but we have to be this. If we're going to be a complete community. And so this E O A is based on that same thing. We looked down the highway and we said, you know what? The Helvetia industrial area, one exit down from us. Is going, it looks like it's nearly built out. It is very likely what it's going to look like in North Plains when industrial development comes this way. And so we use that as the model to figure out what it's going to look like in North Plains. So we have to sit down with them and we have to illustrate and, and kind of elaborate on. We're planning for a specific outcome. Um, we're not forecasting employment. At some big number and, and being hypothetical about the future, we're planning very specific outcomes. And we have to talk about that with them so that they kind of understand what they're doing because their first read of, of, of everything, apparently. That didn't come across as well as it should have. So it's a matter of just sitting down and talking to them about what, what we did versus what they. Um, aren't sure of. Does that make sense?
Yeah. What does it mean to reduce its identified site size requirements, that fourth recommendation? What does that mean?
Well, my answer is I don't have a good understanding of what they mean. Because we went through, we were very specific about number of things. Number one. We did a, an incredibly detailed drill down on what has been developed. In North of Highway twenty-six in Hillsborough, all the different manufacturers and employers, their sites. Uh, we even got employment numbers. I mean, we have a very specific idea of what, how has it actually happened? And then we utilized that information along with all those interviews we did with a bunch of industry experts, the state and, and a bunch of other, um, folks. For lack of a better word. And we, we kind of combined all that and we very specifically planned all of these things out. So, out to be honest, I'm not sure what she means by that because in the report and in the appendix, we're very specific. Frankly, I'm uncomfortable with the, with, over a twenty-year period. Let's back up away from the rules and, and E O As and U G Bs. Over a twenty-year period, it's, it's hard to predict what's going to happen in a year. And yet the rules are requiring us to be extremely detail-oriented, specific over a twenty-year period. And they even are wondering about that. So we're gonna ask for them to explain some of their comments and we're going to walk them through how we. So we're going to ask for them to explain some of their comments and we're going to walk them through how we follow. The land use board of appeals, specific instructions for how a city that needs to, to, to grow in an unprecedented way. To plan for that. We're doing what the land use board of appeals says we're supposed to do as well as follow the rules. So the main thing is this is going to be the first meeting of men. This is just the economic development specialists. This isn't the E G B staff person. And this isn't, I mean, this isn't the regional rep for the L C D. There will be a bunch of meetings and there will be a bunch of discussions, but I don't anticipate. Changes to our E O A.
And I guess I'd be surprised if we didn't get something like this, right? I mean, I'm glad there's, you know, there's four and not forty, right? Recommendations, but I see it as a, you know, a positive thing, but then again, again, it's so spurred on these. What ifs questions in my mind when I read it.
I, what I would do is, um, I read that when I first got the letter Friday afternoon, I was a little more. I was like, wait a minute, I, I kind of figured they would zero in and, and on the forecast. For no good reason, honestly, because of all the work that was put into it to not make it, to really get into the detailed planning that we did with the report. Um, but Pat Rubilia pointed out a couple of good things that I missed because I jumped in on the details in the middle. It's important to remember that at the beginning of the letter, D L C D commends us. For our approach to this, to find and target industries and plan for that suitable for North Plains. That's huge. That's not, we think, we're alarmed by what you're planning and how you're thinking about your future and you. And, and how you've not substantiated it. That's not how they began. They commended us for how we did this. And the last thing they said was. The industrial land issue is a region wide and a statewide problem and they appreciate. Our work and they look forward to partnering with us on this. So, yes, we have some details to talk about, but they've given us some really nice. Direction and, and commendation and what we're doing, how we're doing.
So your good feeling is that there shouldn't be any changes. It should go forward.
Counselor Kendall, I, correct. We might have to provide some more details. We might have to better document a few things, but I don't anticipate and. Frankly, after all the work that's been put in on it, I don't plan on there being changes.
That's good because I can't imagine, you know, saying we want to go a different direction. I mean, who are they to say? Okay, we want to take a chance and move with it. I mean, why would you put your thumb on it? It just doesn't cut mustard with me. I mean, hey, we did all this work, we paid for it. So it's good to hear that there's a deposit that you're in. I hope it doesn't come back and say we can't do this because. It's not going to be very popular with this council.
Counselor Kendall, thank you. Good. I thank you for the observations and, um. Yes, um, a city has a lot of prerogative regarding a lot of these things. And that's why, just to reiterate, back in September of last year, when we worked through economic development priorities and that resolution that we did. That was a really key thing to do because that makes it clear to the state, it makes it clear to the county. We have to work with the county on this as well. But that resolution with your core economic development priorities, it set the stage for. Making it clear this city is taking the, its challenges seriously and what we're going to move forward with is. Um, this process that helps change your economy. So. I, we're, we're confident in the work that's been done.
Yeah, because you know, you look at all the houses, we, we need a different direction. So, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. Don't put a push in a corner. No, I'll be there. I'll back you up.
Any other comments or questions for Bill, Heather, Andy? Any other?
Bill, somewhere, we had a meeting just on Friday and we were all wondering over the table, where are we going to get that? Wouldn't it be great to hear D L C D sooner or later?
All right, great.
All right. Well, if there are no other comments, questions, go ahead and close the public hearing. Seven fifty five. All right, so, um, then the next step would be to, oh, let me get my memo up here. I think we have a couple of, um, motions. We have to do a first reading and then.
The, the first would be to approve the city file number so that we, for the land use action and then you would move into the ordinance.
So I need a motion, um, to approve the city file. Would someone like to make a motion? It's in your packet.
I moved to approve city file number twenty two dash zero five zero. Economic Opportunities Analysis and Development Code and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment.
All right, we have a first by Council Martinez, second by Council Kendall. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry. The second is to, uh, I need a motion to conduct the first reading of ordinance number four seventy nine by title only.
I'll make a motion. I move to conduct the first reading of ordinance four seventy nine by title only. One second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Council Smith, second by Council Page. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Me a second. Ordinance number four seventy nine is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Moon Plains, Oregon. Implementing an update to the Economic Opportunities Analysis and Comprehensive Plan. Then. Final, um, I need a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four seventy nine.
Move for full ordinance, reading of order before seventy nine for first reading.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Council Kendall, seconded by Council Page. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill. You are the guru. All right, we're going to move on to resolution number, uh, nine, resolution, um. Twenty one eighty fours, the Washington County Cooperative Library Service. Robin.
Yes. So on behalf of Andy Werner and myself, um, I. We do request that you adopt resolution number two one eight four to sign the new intergovernmental agreement. With Washington County Cooperative Library Services. This is required for all member libraries in this cooperative for us to, um, remain a member. And this is for four years, um, beginning July one. So, uh, just a little background, um. The final draft, uh, was reviewed and approved for your consideration by the Board of Commissioners in March. And, um, the current I G A will expire at the next month. And this accounts for. Uh, in the current, uh, biennial budget, this accounts for about thirty six percent of our, um, library's budget. You have a memo from Lisa Tattersall, the manager of W C C L S. Sort of just, uh, pointing out a few of the updates from the last I G A. And so I am happy to answer any questions you might have. I, in my. And a report, I also highlighted a few things I thought were specifically of interest to our community.
You did make a mission, um, mention of the pool, the pool two funds.
Yeah, so pool two has renamed now the, um, revenue contingent allocation. The levy that the voters passed. If there are surplus of the forecast from that part of our funding. Uh, from that levy, that will be distributed evenly to all the member libraries except for the county run one. Uh, if it's over twenty five thousand. They said if it was less than twenty five thousand, just the. Administrative costs of distributing it. Um, would prohibit that. They would instead put it towards like downloadable resources for everyone.
So you need it over twenty five. Great. The comments or questions? Or Robin, Counselor Martinez?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
No questions or comments, then, um, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution twenty one eighty four to sign that a new intergovernmental agreement. The Washington County Cooperative Library Services, which is required to be made a member of the library, Washington County.
One second. First by Council Page, seconded by Council Payman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you very much. This is a great example of cooperation in our larger, um, county community. And I know that, you know, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't do it without that cooperation and the support of all of our locals and. Everyone here, so keep on doing what you're doing. We love it.
All right, item number nine B is resolution twenty one eighty five for procuring the playground equipment for Jesse Mays. Andy?
Okay, actually balancing the tables. Um, I know I've, I've mentioned this before, one of the things that. We talked about as a project team with three J or Lance the Architect and then, um, city staff, because we're bidding the project for Jesse Mays. Uh, which is not the bid right now, bids are due, uh, next week, something we had been discussing for a while, splitting off. Uh, one piece of the bid, if we could take a picture, which is the playground equipment, which is going to take the longest lead time to get the, the equipment here. It's about sixteen to twenty week lead time. We're planning to start the work right after the garlic festival and that's about twenty weeks from now. So we're trying to get the equipment. Um, in the queue and onsite and, um, deliver in time for, for September. So we don't want to wait a few more weeks and all of a sudden, as we know, it could be more and more plays. We're getting into October, mid-October. Waiting for this. So we went out to a few different vendors that hold the state contract, um, for, for playground equipment in communities. It's kind of a, it, it's basically a purchasing cooperative in the state. They help negotiate with different vendors to get you better prices for. For kind of community assets like that. And, uh, Wildwood had the, the fastest, uh, delivery time. That's not the lowest price. But we would, we were more interested in, uh, trying to get the, um, quickest time here, uh, within our budget. Uh, so that's what you see before you, this, this would end up being a sole source, um. Contract with Wildwood, but that's to get basically all of the playground equipment for the five or twelve structure and the two to five structure. And then a few benches as well. Everything else would be part of a bid that the contractors will be submitting next week. But in this case, this would be an owner provided contractor installed portion. So we'll put the order in, if this is approved, we put the order in. We're not paying the markup on, uh, on this within a, within a bid, you know, a bid project. And we're just waiting for it to arrive about the same time the contractors are through, sort of doing the work, doing the demo. And working on the parking lot, working on the water filtration system. We're hoping the time's up just right, the equipment arrives at that time. Um, the contractor will be doing the, uh, the home moving, that's getting carried to delivery for it. So where would it store? Well, if it come, if it comes early.
But the delays, if there, if it is that matchup. Where will we start at? Have we, have we, are we a facility or?
Well, it, it, that's going to be up to the contractor to figure out because whoever bid the project anyways, if this is a normal year. Um, they'd be responsible for, for having the materials on site anyway. So you probably see it. Um, I don't know, maybe probably just do it behind the building, something like that works a bit, kind of the way.
So if it's, it was our stuff. Why would the contractor be responsible for storing it?
For, for storing it?
Yeah.
They're not going to be responsible for storing it.
So where will we store that if the project cannot, if it turns in early before the, before the, yeah.
Yeah, behind the building. Yeah, it could go in behind the building, um. We could, my goal is to have them just do, uh, just do, uh, whatever it's called, F O B freight on board. Um, kind of lighten up the time to say we don't want it any earlier than, you know, August fifteen. Yeah. So that's, that, that's the goal. And the guy we're working with knows this. His, his concern was not, it's going to show up early.
Um, next concern is that. What does school source their playground from? Is it the same place? What's that? We have, since schools have always have playgrounds, would that be something, I mean, maybe as a score, they have. Resource to, that may they have the same, well, it sounds like you have the integral thing. Pre-vetted.
Yeah, yeah, it's called N A S B O. I, I forget the acronym, but it's like, um. If the, if the city wants to buy a copier, there's going to be, there's going to be negotiated prices for certain city assets. Schools would be the same thing. Usually, you know, schools, counties, cities. A lot of the larger sort of capital equipment items, there's going to be negotiated prices for, and the state has done that sort of negotiating with you. Um, so playground is going to be one of those sort of larger capital assets that would actually depreciate within the city hall. Are going to be, are going to be those. Maybe even some items in the library that I don't. Yeah, well. Without having a twelve to fifty percent markup on it and we can hit it sooner, this is, this is what we're hoping to do. Yeah, I mean, we looked at a, a couple of different quotes. This is the exact thing, it's the exact same thing. The only difference is one of them would. You know, maybe the, their freight charges differ a little bit.
Any other comments or questions?
Question. Did you say it was, but the, stuff would start after the garlic festival?
Right, the schedule is, yep, August fifteen, eighteen, something like that. Yes, the good news for the garlic festival folks is you don't have to do a deep clean of the area afterwards this year.
Yeah.
Party and.
I have a bulldozer ready.
Right. Do you want to, do you want to demo a few things for your hair?
Yeah.
Remember, we sell beer there on the festival.
But that means it's a good point. We usually do all that.
All right, any other comments or questions? Go right ahead, Counselor Smith.
I guess we could have demolition derby, but. How are we doing budget wise?
Uh, the engineer's estimate is about, this is from the bid, one point one to one point three million. Yeah, so this is a, this is, including this is the portion of it. So when you take into account. All the work that needs to be done, and then there's some of the civil engineering aspect of this, uh. Doing that, basically a large French drain under the, under all the playground. Where it rains over here, because we keep on second range, and then resurfacing and redoing the parking lot. There's, you know, that's. Probably a couple hundred, hundred fifty thousand alone, just in.
So do we have to have a pool from the water?
meaning serving water? Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, we have that, yeah. Yeah, they, they had to sign off on the onsite infiltration system.
Any other questions? Entertained motion?
I have one really quick, quick minor question. Estimated rate to nine seven three one one, I'm sure this is the typo, but that is a code as for Salem, I'm guessing that. Um that's probably typo, correct?
No. Yeah, he knows, he knows where it needs to go.
Okay, I'm like, is it cheaper, sort of closer? You can all just drive out there and pick up a piece each. Thank you.
I move to adopt position at twenty one eighty five to approve an agreement with uh Wildwood Playground Northwest Company. To purchase playground equipment for the Jesse Mays park.
One second.
All right, we have a first by Council Page, seconded by Council Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry, thank you. All right, um. New business, unfinished business, um city manager report, you're Friday at five. Uh reports are great, love them, thank you. For the consistency and uh for the information. Do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, staff provides some of that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually it's. Well, yeah, I'm kind of frantic.
You're running around.
Yeah, no, I mean, most of the stuff, someone else, everyone else's work loaded in their head. I guess a couple of things I'll I'll mention and I did on Friday too, so we're going. Once Blake leaves, we don't have a water certification and he's our DRC, that's called a direct responsible charge basically for. Essentially submitting reports to the state for drinking water, so I'm negotiating, not really negotiating, Hillsborough has already agreed to do that um for us. Um so the attorneys have worked up an IGA, it's pretty simple. Uh Hillsborough, believe it or not, did this Beaverton last summer for three months, they had to provide this service to them, and I don't know what happened there, but. Um but to do it for us would be much less work, um the people that it's the newer door system, we're gonna meet with them uh later this week to kind of walk up with a few things, but. Basically signing some of the uh reports for the uh state and, you know, the IGA also includes if there's any sort of emergencies or something that a local crew can't handle, they would pitch it there. Uh as well, so we're going through those details, um I have to sign something though before Blake leaves, so. If that happens, which is probably going to, I'll retroactively come back to the council, probably your next meeting, to have the council bless the IGA. But our attorney, we're getting on that next. This is something we have to do as we're searching for public works director. Um we extended that search until the end of this month. Uh Bill's been working his LinkedIn uh network, we'll. Yeah, well, anyone, work whatever network you have, my wife sent me a message this week and I told him like, you know, do not be afraid to head on some engineers and. People that won't leave the state, like I did. Um so we're kind of turning over those leaves. Um but, right, so related to that, yeah, we are doing a barbecue for Blake this Friday. Um he's off, he's off.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, at noon, the weather's supposed to be nice, we're gonna do it outside, set up some tents and.
Which isn't gonna be, cuz I have a. Turns out my 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 previous manager staff is all off back there.
Yeah.
I'm involved by myself, so.
Noon, noon, yeah, yeah, noon. Um we're getting him a brick at the Veterans Park, uh to kind of recognize Blake, so we're gonna work on that. Uh so it'll be something that's hopefully made by this Friday, present it from there, we'll have that installed in our park. Um, something I mentioned on Friday too, we put a lot of work into updating our handbook. Um staff has seen that, made a memo that went out to them, kind of explaining the changes. This is all really part of us trying to be forward thinking and, you know, a little bit. Progressive, taking care of people, you know, so that will be to the city council for consideration and adoption. The first meeting in June, our staff has all had a had a chance to go through that. And we have a, we're gonna have a Zoom about those changes next week with staff. Um lastly, election tomorrow could be some, these changes, we'll see, could be interesting. Not not in North Platte, but in the rest of the county, it could be interesting. Um and. You know, it. I think we're in a pretty good spot because um, you know, and we've done some work and so, you know, like. The UGB, for instance, presenting to the county and then one of the other uh candidates kind of explaining what our aspirations are to this person as well, so. But it'd just be interesting to see these results roll in, I think. Um and then lastly, to the goal report that was adopted earlier, just the goal summary, but. I sent out a new one earlier today, it looks a little better, we'll get that posted on, get that sent out on the Facebook page and the community too, it's got the implementation plan uh in the back of it.
Great, thank you, any questions?
Simple one, we talked about, I think social, so. Uh Memorial, there's something we, I I know that Chambers did most of the work on that.
Um so um uh there are two people who stepped up to help Cindy. And Valerie Webb is one of them, I think she uh is going to be working with Cindy, Cindy has a, you know, she's got the boilerplate for it. Um but I asked Valerie to work with Cindy and she said, yes, I'll do it, it's great. And then there is a another lady from the chamber, she's new to the chamber. Amy, you might have met her, um so the two of them are helping Cindy with the day. So more to come, I haven't heard anything since.
Who's on my phone up here? I missed last year.
Good. Any other questions?
Nope.
No. Um I just attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee uh meeting today and um the MISTF uh twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. Projects, uh the potential projects for the MISTF plan was presented to us today. Um and the Glenco and West Union Road is on uh District Four, so what they did is they took. Um they took the four districts and basically they're gonna divide the funding between the four uh commissioners, uh District one, two, three and four. Um so they had preliminary list. Then um so that was presented today, they're gonna take it back to staff and then jurisdictions and um they're gonna do some more cost. Analysis on each one of the projects and then staff will go through and whittle it down even more and I really hope that ours continues, stays on that list. But um we should see um another list coming back to us um in June. Um they're also, they also asked for um historical funding per district, so they wanted to see where the bulk of the. We wanted to see where the bulk of the, the money has been spent in the four districts in past, the past years. Not that it would be a a criteria for us to make a recommendation to remove something or not. But it was just the, it'll be interesting to see where the county has been spending their, the the MISTF money um throughout the entire county. Um, you know, just to see if if it's been equitable for for most, for most districts and and communities and cities. So that'll be an interesting um, an interesting report to see and uh what I think, when I get it, I'd be happy to share it with anyone that's wants to see it. Um and I guess Kittleson is doing all the review on the, on the pricing on that particular project too, so. More power to them. Wow, it's pretty involved, so that's kind of cool. Um, I guess the Washington County Sheriff is having a canine trial this Saturday, do you know anything about that? I just saw it on on a posting.
That sounds about right, though.
It sounds right, it sounds like something that might be kind of interesting. Yeah.
Didn't have the date on the line.
Oh.
Yeah.
Cool, and then um the Pumpkin Ridge, we have a meeting this week with uh Pumpkin Ridge and, or the, the group, uh the live group. Andy, Commissioner Willie, myself and um. Who else, there's somebody else in that, just to get an update on, on, you know, what's been taking place. It's still my understanding that they really don't have a um a safety plan in place yet. Um they've, I've, it's, I, it's also come to my attention that they changed the name of the golf organization. Um instead of live, it's something else like five uh something. It's ridiculous, it's absolutely ridiculous, um but they, all the mayors signed on to the letter, uh went to Pumpkin Ridge, I talked to. The um one of the folks from uh live on the phone the other day. And he wants to talk to the mayors and I shared that with the mayors and the mayor's like, well, we don't wanna talk to you, so. It's gonna be really interesting to see how this all kind of plays out publicly and um, you know, whatever, so uh. Yeah, yeah, just get your popcorn out, you know.
I know, I may, we've been having coffee for this long.
Oh, I'm there.
Yeah, and they they painted that whole inside, it's something, it's been a money light modern, just unbelievable, you can't believe it.
Yeah, well, they changed the, they changed it, it was Saturday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, now it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday. So um they moved it back.
Interesting to see, because then I see he pulled out the PGA, didn't he? So he made that average job, he made it, he made it.
Yeah.
Have gone and get a job. If this don't happen now.
I think tomorrow is the deadline, PGA has to give them the lease, but really, so.
Wow, yeah. So um more info to come.
Yep.
So the fourth is on Sunday.
I'm sorry.
The fourth is a Monday.
Fourth is a Monday.
So they're gonna be embarrassed.
Uh no. No, they'll be carrying down. Their golf tournament. And yeah, that's all I have to share, um Counselors, anyone have anything to share? Counselor Smith?
Yes, I attend the uh banks, City of Banks. I had three elected officials there, it's all, aside myself, there's Suzanne Weber and Commissioner Willie. I don't think they had one counselor there. So. That was kind of.
So they haven't lived the day, you know.
Well, we've done a little day too, a bit fun, but uh, yeah, I was kind of. Baffled by that. She would get that more support. Uh I guess it kind of fixed part of the water problem they're losing. Instead of a million and a half gallons per month, you'll leak, they fixed. I did hire the Public Works Director last year. They also passed the levy for their. Public safety levy last year. And she, one of the things she's really happy with, her new bank sign. So, yes, I. Spent a lot of time talking to Suzanne Weber, thought she was pretty bright. Pretty bright, me at once. And in my first chamber meeting. And I thought that was interesting.
Thank you, Counselor Smith, anyone else, um any other counselors? All right, well, if there's nothing else, then I will go ahead and close our city council meeting at eight twenty four. Thank you all, have a good night.
Night.
Thank you.